Good evening. We call this special city council meeting of August 24th, 2016 to order. Heidi, if we could do a roll call please for determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modrick, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I would ask Alderman Ritchie Nordstrom to lead us in prayer. You're welcome to join us, but not required.
Dear Heavenly Father, Hallowed is your name. Bless this mayor and council. We ask you to place your healing hands upon our colleague Jerry Wright to bring him better health. Bless the staff and citizens of Rapid City. Bless the decisions we are about to make with the monies of the citizens of Rapid City. Bless those who are in need of healing hearts, minds, and bodies. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Before I turn this over to the mayor, I just have one piece of information. With Jerry Wright's permission, I tell you that last night he was taken to the hospital by a family member. He was admitted. I went up and seen him this afternoon and what he said, they had diagnosed that he'd had a mini-stroke. Apparently, no procedure is going to be required. He should expect a full recovery and hopefully home yet sometime today, maybe is home. And he wanted to make sure that everyone knew he was in great spirits and that he thanked everyone for their thoughts and prayers. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. When I presented the budget several days ago, the next step was to have written questions from the council members and then I would provide answers. Between that and conducting regular business, I got the answers released to the council via email this afternoon and also to the media. So rather than have us try to follow along and read all these, I thought I would just punish us all now for a moment. I'll read the questions and answers and then I'll be open for additional questions, if that's what you wish. So on the document behind the cover letter, there's, up at the top of the page, you'll see the council person who submitted the questions. You'll see the question and then the answer. So these questions are from Amanda Scott. Does the 2017 general fund budget revenue stream for property taxes include taking CPI increase for any years available? And the answer to that is no. The calculation for Consumer Price Index for 2015 was in the negative, and so we are not presented with that dilemma this year on whether or not to take a CPI increase. Number two, how was the 2017 general fund budget revenue stream for sales tax calculated? And it was calculated by the simple formula of taking the 2015 actual receipts and adding 2% for 2016 and an additional 2% for 2017. Number three, when city council approves the 2017 budget, does each, does the department director have the ability to move funding from one line item such as wages to another line item such as supplies without coming back for supplemental appropriation? And the answer to that, my written answer is yes, but the other answer is yes and no. Yes, the finance office cannot locate any policy or resolution or any official action by the council prohibiting this, but the budget, the items within that budget are not moved from one line to the next. What's important at the time of accounting is the bottom line in, within that organizational code to see if that organizational code is within its, within its overall spending budget. So it is possible to have an under expense in wages, for example, an over expense in supplies and materials and have that balance out on the bottom line. Please provide the detail of the interdepartmental charges for the 2017 budget. And the current charges are associated with legal support, information technology support, financial accounting and administration. There's an attachment, number one here, updated to reflect a change in the budget, moving the cemetery from enterprise funds to the general fund. And there's some detailed specifics there. And I'll add a little editorial on the issue of interdepartmental charges. I went into this budget season believing that I was going to solve the dilemma of the interdepartmental charges and come up with a perfectly logical and easily understood formula for doing this. Well, that was easier than it seemed easier than it was, and ultimately, I failed to have that completed by the time this was presented to you. I have learned that it is common practice, in fact, considered best practice, to receive money from enterprise funds for general fund expenditures such as legal, finance, HR, IT, those type of things, and that other agencies seem to struggle with a bit of a formula as well. I believe there's someone out there that has the right formula. So even though technically you consider the mayor's off, the mayor being done with this budget now that he's handed it off to the council, I'm committed to continue to work with the finance officer to come up with a better formula and to present any proposed changes to the council so that it might be a little more logical and better understood. Number five, the presented budget shows a sales tax revenue projection of $26,789,000, while the graph shows a projection a few pages later of $26,466,000. So the question is, which is the right number? So the, the answer is $26,466,000. The other number includes $322,892 as projected sales tax collected through sales tax audits. I can't tell you, I know all the specifics about how that's collected through an audit, but I know that it's listed separately. Pauline can fill you in if you're interested in greater detail than that. Number six, the calculated total of revenues for the general fund is $62,344,819, while the calculated total of expenses is $62,362,819, showing that this is not a balanced budget, but actually a deficit of $18,000. So in handout number two, the appropriation ordinance for the corrected numbers, so we have, we have done number crunching and shuffling on this particular budget up, up to and including the day of the, of the presentation a week or more ago. And so the numbers are appearing different on some of the slides, which I'll expose here in a minute, too. So the correct number is on the ordinance. Number seven, the calculation of police expenses are off by a small amount, which is the correct value. The correct value is listed here in the answer, and the difference is due to rounding. Number eight, the calculation of fire expenses are off $9,914,000 versus $9,885,000. So which is the correct number? $9,914,000 is the correct number. Salaries were updated just prior to the budget presentation to reflect the new union contract. And the slide was not updated accordingly, and then a small difference for rounding as well. Number nine, the solid waste collection enterprise fund, the subtraction of expenses of $2,300,000 from the revenue of $4,564,000 results in a net profit of $2,264,000. However, the net income reported as presented is $1,976,000. What's the extra $300,000 being spent on? So when I, when I got the sheets from finance, from all the enterprise funds, solid waste collection articulates in their sheet expecting a 93% correction or collection rate. They were the only department who presented it this way, so I changed it using their 100% expectation of collection. So that's the difference of the $300,000. So we did this for reporting consistency, and we just didn't change the net income number on one of the slides. Number 10, the water enterprise fund shows only three line items comprising the expenses for 2017 totaling $5,128,000, when the stated 2017 requested budget is $7,353,000. So what is the extra $2.2 million being used for and why isn't it listing? And the $2,225,033 is for debt service that was inadvertently left off the slide. It sounds like we should be having someone else prepare the slides next year, besides me. So that was a presentation mistake. Number 11, this CIP fund, Capital Improvements Project Fund Balance, is reported at $24,138,000. This is a misrepresentation since the majority of these funds are committed or under contract. Councilwoman is questioning whether it's a definition of the term "fund balance," and so she's asking for clarification of the fund balance. And so the answer is yes. Fund balance on the slides is all of the money in the bank as of June 30th, 2016, committed or not. Number 12, the Vision Fund reports under revenue that a soccer loan payment of $54,000 is anticipated. I was under the impression that the city council voted to forgive the soccer loan. Please clarify what was forgiven and what still needs to be paid back to the Vision Fund by the Soccer Association. So the answer is, there were two different loans that were approved for the Soccer Association. The one that was forgiven was for the $550,000 loan for the lights, as those are city infrastructure. There's still an outstanding loan on the amount of up to $250,000 for signage. That was the responsibility of the Soccer Association. Number 13, I was not aware that the ordinance specifies that the Opportunity Capture Fund would be allocated money outside of an approved Vision project plan. Please provide the language within the ordinance. That specifies the Opportunity Capture Fund is automatically allocated funds out of the Vision Enterprise Fund. The answer is, it's not in city ordinance. This is a result of Tax Increment District 64, which is the Cabela's Tax Increment District. The city originally authorized giving $2 million to Cabela's out of the Opportunity Capture Fund allocating, out of that fund to entice them to come to town. As part of the tax district agreement and as part of the reimbursement on the land, it was agreed that the $2 million would go back to the Opportunity Capture Fund. So in 2016 and 2017, it includes projections of what the city should be receiving for that purpose, and it would reach the maximum of $2 million in 2017. In addition to that question, as a side note, I sincerely hope there were no expenses recorded from the 2016 Vision Fund, since there was very little administration of this enterprise fund for 2016. So the answer is, there are expenses being recorded in 2016, as there are projects still taking place that have not been completed. Horseman Pool, the soccer fields, Opportunity Capture Fund, Mount Rushmore Road, and Skyline Wilderness Park. So then, further clarification, please indicate if the Opportunity Capture Fund received funds from Vision in 2016? And the answer is yes. Partially as a carryover and partially from the proceeds of the tax district at Cabela's. Number 14, the Vision Enterprise, Vision Enterprise Fund should reflect the $6.5 million that will be allocated in the 2017 Vision Fund Plan as approved by the city council. So the answer is, it's difficult to budget for expenses that are unknown at this time as we have no idea how the money will be spent or how much will actually be allocated. We can put the full amount remaining into a contingency fund if that would appear to make things easier to understand, and if that's the wishes of the council. This question comes from Alderman Ritchie Nordstrom. Part question, part comment. I'm immediately drawn to your point of an evaluation task force for the Journey, DALL, RSVP, and library, for example. Have you got a conception of what the makeup of your arts and culture and other issues evaluation committee will look like? So the answer is, during my budget presentation, I outlined on one slide that I felt the need to evaluate several organizations that are either born of the city of Rapid City or have a significant relationship with the city. The organizations vary from volunteer services, recreation, arts and culture, library, Humains, and the Humane Society. I believe the best formation for this committee would be approximately three members from Rapid City's business community, three members from the Rapid City Common Council, and three members from the community who are neither of the above and nor are they subject matter experts or enthusiasts of those on the list. The group will evaluate each organization based on a simple valuation, evaluation criteria such as, and this is subject to change because the reason I have not formed this committee is that I'm not settled yet on exactly what the plan is. I'm getting close, but here's, here's what I know as of today. The evaluation criteria will be something like, a summary of the organization, any agreements or contracts between the organization and the city of Rapid City, the funding sources of the organization, the organization partnerships or collaborations, the benefit to the community, both tangible and non-tangible, and any recommendations for change to the existing relationship with the city of Rapid City. The committee will not need to launch a study on the value of arts or other such organizations to the community. Rapid City has subject matter experts available and has at its disposal resources for acquiring such information. Upon completion of each evaluation, the committee will give recommendations to the mayor, who will then reject or concur with the recommendations and implement any adopted changes. Naturally, significant changes to some of the organizations will require authorization from the city council. So in essence, or in summary, this committee will interact with the organizations on the list, come to an understanding about what's being provided, what the relationship is between the city, will eventually present those things to me. I will come to try to understand them, require further information, or call that evaluation complete. I will provide a summary of these evaluations available for review. And the bottom line is, or the goal here is, to gain a better understanding of where our money's going. I could probably talk about this for another five or 10 minutes. I'll try not to. But of course, this is a little touchier subject than I'd imagined. I mean, it looked good and very innocent on paper, but it causes some people to squirm, which I understand is justified. So this is a matter of, and fill in the blank with the organization on the list. The organization provides some service to the community that the organization feels very strongly about, and the organization sees the benefit, too. But here, in this administration and on this council, I think we, we are not in agreement or not having full understanding about the value to the community of these organizations. And I think just that fact is a disservice, both to the organization and to the community. So I think it's in our best interest and in the community's best interest to come to know these organizations and to find a page that we can all get on so that we can support them, they can support the city's mission to create a better community. And in, in the worst-case scenario, we may not be able to get on the same page or come to an agreement on every bullet point within every organization, and we can recommend some changes if necessary. But I hope that when we come out of this uncomfortable, apparently uncomfortable evaluation period, we'll have a better feeling for where those funds are going and what they're being used for, and we'll be able to support the use of these funds for that particular organization. Okay, these comments and questions come from Alderman Jerry Wright. Finding the needed capital improvements money to get our street highway system on the mend. Stormwater issues are also underfunded. And the answer is, I believe locating and securing a reliable revenue source for streets, utilities will begin when the priority budgeting system is in place. And I imagine, and I mean that term literally, I imagine that finding a, an additional source of money within our existing budget will occur over the period of a year or two or three years. I can't really predict how soon it's going to become logical to all of us, how we need to change our funding and spending practices to, to meet this priority. But we will know more even by the year's end, I believe, how we're matching up on the priority budgeting criteria and on the scoring. So number two, a full listing of capital improvements by funding, better analysis on CPI, for example, how can we possibly have $25 million cash balance? This is a major problem. I believe this is a definition issue again. Cash balance does not mean undesignated cash. The cash balance represents money that is committed but not yet spent and could span over, capital projects over a couple of years. Number three, glad to see the additional labor for parks. They were whittled down in the late 80s and never recovered. However, they need to do a thorough needs analysis such as we used to do in a rate study, for example, how do, why do we mow the floodway to the height of a lawn and as often as we do? And my response to that is, I have advised Parks Director Jeff Bigler that some form of assessment with the Parks Department will be taking place in the near future. My desire specifically is to understand labor costs in that department and the overall allocation of Parks Department resources. Number four, the drop in cornerstone funding, is that the result of a funding decrease from the Veterans Administration? I have heard that. If so, can we go to bat and get that back? And I'm editorializing a little bit in my response, but here's my response. The drop in cornerstone rescue mission funding is primarily the result of funding decreases from the Veterans Administration. These are based on some assessment by the VA that veterans' housing programs have been highly successful, therefore, there is a decreased need. These are nationwide cutbacks. The VA has become embattled with great emphasis placed on mismanagement of funds, dwindling veterans' benefits, among other issues. Senator Mike Rounds has been most visible in his legislative fight to get the VA back on track. We could try to lobby to get the cuts reinstated. However, I would not have a great deal of confidence this can be done. Furthermore, VA funds are only one part of the financial problem at the Cornerstone Rescue Mission. Over the last several years, demand for services has gone up while private donations and other grant dollars have stagnated philosophically and ethically. I believe it's good business and a smart investment to attempt to rehabilitate the homeless rather than simply respond to the aftermath. And I realize there's a whole discussion in there, but that's my answer to that question. Now, these questions are from Alderman Jason Solomon. For items listed in subsidies slash community investments, do we ask for any performance measures to justify the effectiveness of our investment? If not, shouldn't we? It's helpful to know that taxpayer money is not only going to a sound organization and effort, but also being put to good use. My answer is that, generally speaking, we ask subsidy recipients for financial reporting documents. This mainly includes the major investments where there's a contract in place. There are no performance measurements, but in some cases, there should be. Part of my confusion or frustration with the city subsidy, community investment, is that many of the receiving organizations are providing an intangible benefit to the city, which I'll relate back to the earlier conversation about the evaluations. Some organizations use city subsidy dollars to make up a significant portion of their budget, yet the city has no oversight or administrative or managerial influence. My goal with these agencies is to come to some understanding that allows us as individuals, I mean us in this room as individuals, to guarantee the taxpayer that the funds are being put to good use. So far, this has been a bumpy road. There's, I've noticed the perception of some threat by the city and some defensiveness on the part of some of the organizations, and I simply believe it shouldn't be this way. But us asking questions and so on has made folks nervous, frankly. So, number two, what is the justification for ending the city's contribution to the Ellsworth Task Force? Just in the last year, we've heard rumblings of another round of potential BRAC hearings. BRAC stands for Base Relocation and Closing Hearings, and then C-Ellsworth Disclosure Conduction, Discussion Probably Inevitable. I think that was a Argus Leader article? Okay. So here's my answer. Conditions are different today than they were during the times leading up to past BRAC hearings. On the national scene, military leaders are begging for BRAC hearings. They need to close bases. They also need to dispose of aged equipment to make room and free up funds for new. They are being denied by Congress. In fact, Congress is, has become the sole authority in governing which equipment is used by the military. For one real-life example, when, when the Air Force is finally allowed to dispose of the last B-52, it will be flying when it is 100 years old. Because, that's because of Congress, not because of the military. Military wants to discard, they want to make the operations efficient, but Congress has put a number of protections in place to secure interests for all the states. And that includes, you may have seen some arguments about the A-10 Warthog, John McCain, and lobbying for Arizona and that sort of thing. So there's a lot of protections today. Since the time, oh, sorry, got off track. The point is, it appears there's no greater chance of a BRAC hearing today than there has been any time in the past 10 years. Since the time of the past BRAC hearings, we've seen the formation of the Ellsworth Development Authority. This state agency, formed in 2009, is charged solely with keeping conditions right to help Ellsworth survive any future closer process. Their efforts are substantially different than the Ellsworth Task Force and are related to land acquisition and other hard costs related to Ellsworth's mission and overall sustainability. In summary, the Ellsworth Authority is helping to ensure an objectively greater chance of success in any potential future-based closing hearing. Prior to the BRAC hearings, there is a list of probable bases that is put on that closing list. There is a scoring mechanism that goes along with the selection of those bases. And at the time of the 2005 BRAC hearing, Ellsworth had one mission. Today, we have three. It had a number of homes and businesses in the, I'm not a pilot or Air Force member, but there's a name for the flight path for landing and takeoff. And the, the authority has been purchasing up those lands and, and also, we have the addition of the new training area in Montana, which has been so popular that the Navy has flown out here and used it. So the Ellsworth Task Force was needed during the time of the BRAC hearings, and perhaps the greatest achievement of the task force was becoming a focal point of local support for Ellsworth. At this point in time, considering the conditions and available resources that exist for Ellsworth's sustainability and the fact that the city of Rapid City is essentially the sole funding for, source for the task force, I don't believe city funding for 2017 can be justified. I do believe some of the functions, don't misunderstand, and I'm saying some of the functions of the task force can be assumed by the Military Affairs Committee or other subcommittees of the chamber until a such, such time where a BRAC hearing is imminent. At that time, I would suggest relaunching a task force. But in the meantime, I don't think it's justified. Number three. Number three, under the library, why is there a significant leap in interdepartmental charges? Up about 53, almost 50, yeah, $53,000. And the short answer is they are budgeting differently. Their interdepartmental charges were spread out among two library budgets, the library and the rural library budget, and now it's all in one. So there's no actual increase. Number four, budget analyst. Do you think it's good to provide examples of similar sized communities who've had success having this position on staff? Considering the budget analyst, I have been to Sioux Falls and have studied their budgeting process to some extent. And if I remember correctly, I think this is correct, they employ four budget analysts, some of which are embedded in city departments. Rapid City is becoming a unique mid-sized government organization with its adoption of priority-based budgeting principles. So there are not a lot of other cities our size in the near vicinity that have done this. So while I was crunching numbers through the line item budget and meanwhile participating in priority budget implementation, it's brought to light what I would consider to be our weak link, and that is seasonal budgeting. In fact, some of the, some of the errors, simple errors on this, these question and answers so far probably would have been alleviated. I believe it's essential to track budget performance month to month within all of the city departments. And although we mean well and we do a fairly good job, the fact is we don't do that. And I believe that is a mistake. The Finance Office is heavily tasked with accounts receivable, accounts payable, financial reporting and accountability, and other related finance functions. The resources do not currently exist within the Finance Office to perform the function of budget analysis. Number five, do you have any data comparing our current arrangement with the Humane Society versus bringing animal control under city operations and utilizing the Humane Society for animal sheltering? I do not have data, but I have spoken to some agencies in other jurisdictions. Of particular note, the city of Sioux Falls provides animal control services through their police department. They employ a number of animal control officers who work under the Special Operations Section of the Police Department. The Sioux Falls contribution to their Humane Society is slightly over $100,000. I couldn't remember the real number, 110 or maybe 120,000. There is a clear delineation of duties and responsibilities under their arrangement. The Police Department responds to animal calls, captures stray dogs and cats, and delivers them to the door of the Humane Society. At this point, the city's responsibility ends. The Humane Society then arranges for the final disposition of the animal, whether it be through adoption or other means. I cannot say with great confidence that the city of Rapid City would be best served taking over animal control responsibilities and trying to come to a similar arrangement as the Sioux Falls example. The hiring of additional employees, more administration, and increased cost of employees with full benefits could diminish possible benefits of this arrangement. The preferred arrangement is for an articulation of costs of the animal control function, reimbursement of those costs by the city, and then an additional payment for the housing and final disposition of the animal. The Humane Society and the city of Rapid City are not on the same page on this issue, but I believe we're both dedicated to arriving at a favorable arrangement during the next year. Now, since I wrote this answer, I've learned that the, there's been one negotiation meeting between the city and the Humane Society and that they've requested 15% increase to about $320,000 for 2017. This is different than the, their March 2016 proposal of the same funds that were in 2016 budget, which is 278,000. So there is a negotiation process underway, and we have four, little over four months of the year left. I'm confident we can continue through that negotiation process because there are other items in the contract that are of concern of either party. And so I think the negotiation process is the correct way to deal with the increase request in funds, the other items that one party or the other is desiring to change within the contract. And since this is a contract, this will, whenever it is completed, will come before the council for final approval. So currently, I have $278,000 in the proposed budget for the animal, for the Humane Society. I arrived at that number from the Humane Society at their request from their March presentation in that amount. And if we are to negotiate between now and the end of the year and an increase is added, for example, I think that would be relatively easy to adjust that contract outside this particular budget process. These questions come from Alderman Steve Laurenti. Are there going to be any presentations completed by department directors for each part of their budget? If not, then I'm requesting there be data provided for all of the proposed new positions proposed in the fiscal year 17 per the mayor's budget presentation. Based on his presentation, data was used and should be available illustrating the cost benefit of these new city positions. The answer is, there are no planned presentations by department directors, but of course, the council always retains the ability to invite whoever they wish to their budget hearings. And second question is, there were other new positions proposed like the crime lab tech, and I thought there were others that would like to see the cost benefit analysis on those as well. So we have attached summaries of the FTE, the Full Time Equivalent Employee Request summaries, which have in them, oh, and also the actual score sheets on each. Wait, I might have just said something that's not true. I thought we were having those in there, they're not. Okay, I can get those. There's an actual score sheet that the department director uses to get to the scoring. This is summarized, but it's not the actual sheet, so no, no data is different. So for example, the first one, if I just walk through this first one, it'll be easy to, easy for you to look through the others. It's got the program is utility water maintenance, public works, water reclamation, and the offer or request is for an FTE increase. Oh, sorry. I just looked at the wrong one. Let's go to the second page, since I already started on that one. So the, so the, it has a brief narrative requesting three full-time employees and one pickup truck to assist in the efforts of infrastructure maintenance, the workload of public works officials. So it has a small, a short narrative on the, the situation. And in the summary, here's where you start seeing some of the priority-based budgeting lingo, the scoring criteria. No other available service provider exists for this maintenance effort. That's one of the criteria. No overall, or there's an overall increase in demand of greater than 25%. I think it's actually over 100%. Revenues and other external funding, it's exceed cost of providing service of over 100%. Lowers the actual cost and/or increases efficiency. So then the total priority-based budgeting scoring attribute, or the attribute score of nine, and then the overall comprehensive plan summary score four. So all of these were compared to the comprehensive plan. The connections with that plan are articulated on the original scoring sheet, and that's available, we can get copies of those out. And so we come up with the score. And what we're lacking in this particular process, which makes it frustrating, is we are lacking the, all of this information being put into the priority budgeting software. We're not ready with our background work yet to be able to load this information into the software. That will visually display how these items stack up with our other priorities in the city. So even though the budget attribute score is nine and the comprehensive plan score is four, utility maintenance is a mandatory function. We have to maintain our water system. So this will be a lot more clear when we can visually display it. The plan for priority budgeting is for us to continue with cost allocations. We're doing that right now. When we get done with that, there's one more step, and then we are able to load 2016 data into the computer to see how we're doing, and we can start on 2017 data. So I guess what I just told you was, this is the process we use to get to these, but I can't show you on the screen exactly how it looks because we're in the middle of implementation and it's not ready yet. So there are sheets on every full-time employee request in the documents that we've provided you. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I, what I'd like to do first, if you don't mind, is, is I'm going to go down the list of the parties that asked the questions to see if they're, if they have any follow-up questions regarding their particular answer. So I will first, if it's okay with Alderman Scott, I will first turn to Florida Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, thank you for answering the questions and providing it in a written format. As you indicated, the answers didn't come out till late this afternoon, and I was booked all the way until I came to this meeting. So I opened up my email like at 6:13, and I saw that there was an email as of 3:04 this afternoon. So I have not had a chance to go back through and really look over this. So I did listen to everything you had to say, but I'll probably still need to think about a lot of stuff. With that, Mr. Chair, I, I currently have no more questions. I do have discussion points for the actual budget after we let dismiss the mayor and let him go. But I have no more questions of the mayor at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Follow, since I, I'm going, I'm going in order of those of you who, did he answer your question to your liking? Or do you have a follow-up question as a result of?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I believe overall, the answers are very well thought out, very well put together. The, I guess the general comments that I have at this time are just kind of give me a little more time to process some of the information that was just very presented. But I did take some notes on some of the particulars. And I know I haven't got all of the thoughts put together for the mayor, but if I may ask or make a couple of comments to the mayor?
Excuse me, Richie. What I was, what I did is that you, Amanda, I was going in the order. Amanda asked questions, you asked questions, Jason asked questions, Steve has asked questions. I went to you guys first to see, we're not, we're not in the discussion yet. Do you have any follow-up questions regarding your specific question?
Standby here. If I may ask a question about the CIP balance definition, cash balance.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mayor, I appreciate the answer that you have on the Jerry Wright's. Let me get to that page there, if I may. Cash balance definition. What I'm trying to do also in the CIP committee is to actually come up with some good solid definitions on this. Where did you come up with this definition and how did you arrive at it?
I would suggest we talk to the finance officer. Those definitions came from her, my conversations with her.
Okay, thank you. One second, again, I'm looking over my notes on the Ellsworth Task Force. Probably just a clarification for me at this point is this, the, the understanding or the, the working with or developing a partnership with the Military Affairs Committee? Have you had any more discussions with them on that?
Not since I announced this, not since I did the budget presentation, no.
Okay, thank you. And then on your slide presentations on the budget analyst, and that, I'm sorry, budget analyst position, it's on my page 33. It's down towards the end of your slide presentation. Are we in the process of moving forward on that position?
I have a job description drafted. It has not been graded. I am waiting to hear the final verdict from the council on the whole issue.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That takes care of what I need at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wright's not with us today, but Jerry, I hope you're doing well and watching us. And next, I'll go to Alderman Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And this is particularly, I'm just, since you asked the questions, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to just focus that you're satisfied that you got your questions answered and to see if, if you have any follow-up questions on your specific questions.
Absolutely. I asked five questions. More of a point of clarification on number five. I'm not saying that's the way we have to do things in terms of bringing animal control into city operations. I was just wondering if we've ever compared that whole process before. So that, just as a note of clarification, and it looks like we haven't really dug into that at all. Sounds like it might not even be beneficial to us to even consider it, but I just wanted to make sure that we looked at all angles.
I've never gotten past phone conversations and personal chats with other jurisdictions over this. We've not looked at any numbers or other performance data or anything of that nature. The whole thing, I mean, we're not doing it now. It would be best if someone else besides us can do it. That's, I think that's the goal, I think that's the shared goal we have with the Humane Society. And so we want to do whatever we can to make that arrangement ideal for us both.
The other thing that kind of relates to everything, just in terms of, you might want to give a brief description of what the rest, the, excuse me, the priority-based scoring, how that works, because we see that listed in the, in the descriptions, and I think that's probably going to come up, but it came up in Jerry's questions and things like that. So just while the mayor's here, I'd like him to give us just a very brief overview of what that scoring is all about, and I'll yield the floor.
There are, specific to these employees, we will send out the original scoring sheets, and you'll be able to see the criteria the department directors use in each section of the scoring sheet. I was out of town today and sending texts back and forth to the office, and I'd sort of thought they were being copied and ready for you. So just a miscommunication on my part, but, so we'll get those out. But it's, there are questions such as, is this a mandatory program or not? And some programs are not mandatory, some obviously are. You know, sediment control, for example, is a mandatory program. But it's, will score very low on the other criteria because it's not, doesn't provide a lot of recreation or meet many of the points on our comprehensive plan, but it's required. Some of the, some of them are voluntary, and so then we have to answer, is the city the best service provider for this program? And if it's yes or no, then you go on to the next question and so on. So you end up, and each one is weighted. Mandatory service is a four points, and city's best or the only service provider, three points, and it goes down the line. So there's that type of scoring. And so one scoring might be six, one might be 12. At this early stage, it doesn't mean that the one that scores 12 is going to be twice as prioritized as the one scoring six. All things have to be taken into consideration and really put into the software for us to understand how it, how the larger picture is of prioritization. So that is the one method of scoring, and I think that'll become clear to you when I send out the scoring sheets. The second scoring is we've gone through the comprehensive plan on these positions and on these programs and articulated which section and paragraph of each part of that plan is being supported by these positions or these programs. And those are available on those sheets as well. That's a basic overview, but it will make more sense when you get the document, and I apologize for not having it for you already.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to keep it focused for you. And for the council, not just for you. Thank you, Mayor, for being here tonight. I would honestly say that I would honestly say that we need a lot more information. Based on my questions, and I'll start with the Humane Society. Because I'm the liaison with the Humane Society, I have a little more knowledge and I guess I probably have failed a little bit with the council on sharing enough of that information. I've shared some of it recently with some of the negotiations that I think honestly started in March, you know, with their budget presentation. Now, what I took from that budget presentation, and some of the council was there in March, Richie Nordstrom, myself, the finance director, and the mayor was as well, and I might be missing somebody from the councils, but the number that they gave back then was that their cost of services was just over $500,000, $518,000. The $278,000 figure on their presentation was a comparison to Sioux Falls, which is, I think, you know, short of a real straight comparison because the $108,000 that Sioux Falls pays directly from their general fund doesn't include the nine full-time officers. One of them a lieutenant, one civilian animal control supervisor, seven full-time officers and one part-time officer. Conservatively, I took $30,000 per position. My guess is it would be significantly higher than that. That's another $270,000 that Sioux Falls pays for animal control, bringing a total of about $380,000. And I would say that would be very conservative. I would guess that it is probably more than $500,000 given the wage structure for city government compared to what our current animal services, the Humane Society pays the equivalent positions. My question to you, Mayor, is this. As I'm looking at some of the other questions that I got answers from our finance officer on, and I appreciate that, the work that she put into that and shared with all of us, I saw that the golf course, which is also on your evaluation list, had increases of over $80,000 where we're subsidizing the golf courses. They're on that list to be evaluated, yet we're seeing increases of $80,000 for the golf courses. My question to you is, since they're both under evaluation, and I, and I'll back up after you answer this question. Since they're both under evaluation, how is it that a critical service like the animal control is being held at its 2013 budget for 2017 when the golf courses, which I would say is not a critical service like animal control, because there's a public safety factor with animal control, that there were increases of over $80,000 included in their 2017 budget? If you could answer that.
Sure. I arrived at the $278,000 figure from page 10 of the Humane Society's budget proposal dated March 16th, 2016, where it says 2017 contract proposal A. Under proposal A, the Humane Society, the Black Hills and City would keep their current contracted services and monthly service fees as they exist in the 2016 contract. Proposal B, C, and D are all variations based on scenarios if we choose to cut this or that. So I think it's clear to me that this was the budget request of 270, or $278,000. That's why I put that figure in there. But as I mentioned, still four months left and we're starting negotiations now. Had the first negotiation meeting last week, I believe, and we'll resolve this and come to some agreement that serves both parties by the end of the year.
My next question to you, and obviously I have a lot still that I want to discuss with Humane Society, because we are dealing with a critical service. How they are on an evaluation list is amazing to me because it's a public safety factor. So I have a real difficult situation with that. My next questions are related to the FTEs and the justification for FTEs. What you provided to me was an understanding, I guess your understanding of why you're including them in the priority-based budgeting for FY17. My question, which I think you reiterated or was reiterated by the chair, was that I wanted to know a cost-benefit analysis. How is it that these positions will be a benefit to the taxpayer? And that is, when you say cost-benefit, at least my understanding, maybe I need to be more clear, is that we need to understand what is the current process cost us? In the water treatment area, we want to hire people. So we contract out a lot of those services, I assume. At least, that's what I understand and that was in your presentation. So what I want to know is, what is it costing the water department today or this entire last year and the year before and the year before that, when they've needed these new FTEs for years? What has it, what has it costed them to do that? What was the cost to contract those services in comparison to hiring these FTEs? And so that's what I want to know. That's my understanding of the cost-benefit analysis, is understanding what your current costs are and what you're proposing to do and is there a benefit over the current process? So my question in those areas on the FTEs is not answered and I'm hoping that we will get answers. And I think the council will want to understand that as well, because when we hire full-time employees, as you have stated many times yourself, that generally when government does something, it's very hard for them to retract from doing that. So when we hire all of these new employees, it's a considerable increase, especially when we look at the long-term, the five, the 10, the 15 and the 20-year investment for those new employees, because they're going to get raises as well throughout all those years. So I think it's incumbent upon us to understand that these new FTEs, which will probably be here until they retire and will get replaced by somebody else, we need to understand that the current process is hurting the taxpayer before we approve hiring all of these new FTEs. So I'm hoping that we will get that before we get to a second reading. But I do, I appreciate it, Mayor, I do. I like the direction that you're taking with the budget. I like the discipline with the way that you're moving the city's budget. However, I want to make sure that we get answers to these important questions as we move forward. I thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Laurenti. I'll next go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to say this has really been an interesting process and an interesting change to go through. I do appreciate the fine-tooth comb that you're using with a lot of these things. You know, I know that in discussions past, I would talk about spring cleaning and I really feel that, I know it's impossible to do everything all at once, but I think over some time, you are making some significant contributions to the change and that's been long overdue. So I appreciate your time on this. My only budget question actually came after the fact. It was something new that transpired between us submitting questions and tonight, and that is how the $1 million SAFER grant for the fire department, will that, will there be any adjustments in this budget for that?
That's a good question. I believe the answer is no. I, though, I have not opened those SAFER grant documents and read the conditions and the things required of the city. I was told in a casual conversation by the fire chief that these would cover 100% of employees for two years. To me, when it's a federal grant, I sense that there is a, the city's obligation in this may be something after the two years. So I don't have the answer today, but it's on my list to get the answer.
Is that something that will be assessed prior to ratification of the 2017 budget or no?
Well, it's in my interest and I believe in all of our interests to understand the conditions of that, but that item on the agenda was to authorize applying for and receiving. So I don't know how long ago they applied for it exactly, but I'm guessing we or someone knew then what the conditions were. But I will touch base with the fire chief here very shortly and get all of the details on that and I can forward those on to you all.
Thank you. And then my second question kind of piggybacks on that. If there were to be a change to this proposed budget with recent South Dakota law changes, would it totally reset, I mean, are we going to be in a perpetual first reading if anything changes on this? So can, I know we talked about this before and I was hoping you had some more information between then and now.
I just attended, I just attended a meeting today of South Dakota's first-class cities' mayors and this was on the, one of the items discussed, the new law about the reading of ordinances simply states that if a substantial change occurs between first and second reading, then first reading will have to be done again. Some communities are approaching that very conservatively, saying that anything other than a typo is a significant change or substantial change. I believe the argument is left up to the individual organization. So if we have a $160 million budget and we're going to change it by $5, we could argue that was not substantial. So there is no fine details explaining what substantial is. The burden is on us to define what substantial is. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. I see no other questions in the queue. If I could, I'm going to have to go to Pauline here in just a second, but before, if I could, I just have a comment regarding one of the, you know, Alderman Wright brought up the CIP and such and it wasn't really a question, it was a comment. And I guess one of the things that, with all the work we're doing in downtown and east of Fith and trying to tie the college and wrap it together, I wish we could get Tech to design us a live, real-time spreadsheet for our CIP. So that every day, as soon as a, as soon as a professional engineer gets hired, it goes on and, because it's really hard to track, you know, what, you know, and the key is, is that, is that to get the best benefit for our taxpayers' dollars is to get that money spent and get it bid out and out there working for. So that's my only comment. Next, I seen, there was an email today. There's, there needs to be a correction. If we get to a first reading regarding the airport budget and Pauline, could you bring us up to date or up to speed on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was contacted after the budgets were submitted and the mayor had already done the presentation that the airport and our fire department had actually negotiated where the airport would cover additional costs for 1.5 FTEs out at the fire station. So at some point, we will need to add $124,789 to the, I'll say the OR code 606-02079 budget, which is basically the fire department budget out at the airport, so the ARF budget.
So I believe, I see no other questions in the queue for the mayor. And so I guess as we've come down to the point of discussion and direction, and it looks to me like we have two choices. We can do first reading tonight and try to get the balance of the answers between now and whenever we do second reading. Or if you feel that the number of questions are of such magnitude that you want to go with another round and have more, have further questions and have another budget hearing, then that's it. I will tell you that when the Survey Monkey went out, there's, there are very few days when we're going to be able to have a quorum. And I will tell you that on three of the days that are available, our finance person, Pauline Sumption, will not be available. So I've got Alderman Laurenti in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just, for the public's sake, the Survey Monkey is a software system that is an invite sent to all of the council with all of the available dates for potential budget hearings. And then we fill in the dates that we are available and they're able to put it on one chart so they can see where we're all available. So I just wanted to.
What? It wasn't a monkey?
It really wasn't a monkey, although I wouldn't mind having one, but I don't know. My, I guess I wanted to start with first, I mean, I have a lot on my plate tonight, but the first thing that I wanted to start with, obviously, is just some comment and then see where the rest of the council is sitting. My feeling about where we're at, I believe, is we have a lot, in my opinion, to get answers on. I mean, this is a very, this is, I don't, I can't remember the whole figure, but we're looking at like $163 million of the taxpayers' money. And I don't believe we should even consider first reading at this point, given the fact that we have some areas that I think need to be addressed, some answers that still need to come on some very large budget items. Like I said, when we, you total up all those FTEs that we're projecting, that is a big, big figure for the taxpayers to have to pay. If they make, if there's a benefit in them, you got my vote. But what I want to see, like any private business would do, they're never going to hire somebody unless they've done a very detailed analysis, because it cuts into their bottom line. It cuts into their profit. In this particular case, it cuts into the backpockets of our taxpayers and that's what we're really here representing. So I'm hoping we're going to definitely tonight hold off on considering first reading and then I will shut up for the moment, but I will be talking again. I do have some agenda items that I want to bring forth right away, but I'll let the rest of the council speak at this moment. Thank you.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So after I sent my questions to the mayor so that they could be answered, they were very specific to the budget as he presented it, because I wanted some clarity, because I've reviewed this budget ever since he's presented it. It is much different than what we've had in the past. And so it's got some good aspects to it and it's got some aspects that kind of leave a little more questions as everybody's been bringing up. So I just want to start the discussion with some of my thoughts, and I have shared these with the mayor offline, so he's aware of my feelings on some of these things. The priority-based budget in which the mayor has taken the city, I am totally in favor of and it is a very good thing. In his presentation, he indicated that the 2017 budget is going to be the year of change because it is the year that we're going to be gathering the information on the priority-based budget, get the departments on board with trying to readjust their thinking in trying to budget and take care of those priority items and, because what it comes down to, primarily especially in the general fund. There are only so many funds. The taxpayers are only going to be willing to be taxed so much for property tax. The taxpayers are only going to be willing to be taxed so much for sales tax. And then we have our fees and our permit fees and the other fees that the city collects. That is what makes up our general fund revenue. Government needs to be able to live within those means or, as some council members have brought up before, we need to find another revenue source. In the previous budgets coming over for the last couple of years, there has been an increase or a significant dipping into undesigned cash to balance the budget. I'm not in favor of that. I have not been in favor of that. The four years that I've been on the city council, it took me one or two years to get, you know, fully involved in how this city operates and what comprises the different pieces of this budget. And I've listened to the finance officer and every year, I'm surprised she hasn't said it this year, she may have said it in the paper, I don't know, but she says every single year, you have to remember that undesigned cash is not a revenue source. It's not coming in year after year after year. Once you spend those monies, they're gone. So I am concerned with this budget, again, in 2017, being balanced with undesigned funds of almost $3.5 million, I'm rounding. So I will, and the mayor's aware of this, I am going to have real heartburn in passing an ordinance that balances this budget with, I can't even talk, with undesigned cash this year. So I was doing some tinkering and I want to stress, I don't want city employees freaking out with what I'm about to say and stuff, because the mayor has already indicated his support of city staff in allocating the undesigned cash of $3.5 million to balance this budget with what the requests were that came in. But one of the things the mayor said while he was presenting his budget is he allocated these 15-some-odd FTEs coming in, and he stated that for the 2017 budget, it would have no impact on the 2017 budget, because the wages within there with people leaving or, you know, gaps and filling that position for 60 to 90 days, it would make up for it. It got me thinking. It got me thinking. How much extra padding is in the budget then on that wage line? Which is one of the reasons I posed the question to the mayor of, if we pass a department's budget from the general fund for five million dollars, and even though they have it lined out for wages and benefits and supplies and equipment and office supplies and all this other stuff, once we approve that five million dollars, it is the job, and we want it that way, of that department director to spend that money. That's where the mayor's taking it, priority-based budgeting. If the city council budgets five million dollars, it's up to that department director to allocate those funds where most needed. If that department director gets through the year and they've had a significant increase to their budget, Storm Atlas, or we had a, all, all the trees in town were blowed down and, you know, the Parks and Rec Department as well as Public Works needs additional funds in order to finance that, come back to the city council, that's what a supplemental appropriation is for. Come back, explain what you need the increase in your budget, we'll find the funds then in order to take care of it. So, listening to what the mayor said, that these budgets may have some room in them that the department directors are going to start their priority-based budgeting and, and looking at their budgets and trying to get better at that month-to-month review rather than just knowing they have this certain amount to spend throughout the year, I would propose that we could easily, because I've looked at it, and again, this is not the enterprise funds, this is just the general fund, I would propose that if the mayor really wants the department directors to concentrate on their budgets, they could easily go back to all of the departments within the general fund and just reduce it by six percent across the board. That takes care of that 3.5 million dollars. And then when we get in, it's going to mean more, more work for the department directors, it's going to be more work for the city council, but this is the year that we're trying to get our arms wrapped around what is actually needed to be spent in our different departments. So, one of the proposals I would like to throw out for my peers to consider, we really don't have line items to consider here, so basically by the departments, if you took, um, a, a six percent reduction on all the departments that the, that the mayor lists on his budget, if you take that off and then it really puts it within, with it, where you don't have to balance it with that undesigned cash. Two exceptions to that. When I looked at the mayor's, um, budget line item, which he calls subsidies and buildings, and I dug into that for, with the material that he provided, that's the one that contains all the MOUs. That's the one that contains all the building stuff. It's kind of hard when you've got an MOU that specifies how much money you have to spend, you can't really go back and cut it at that point. So, um, I, my six percent could be reduced if you actually wanted to cut into that. I did not include that in taking a six percent reduction. The other line item that I told the mayor about is that he did graciously put in $50,000 for a line item for city council contingency. And as I explained to him, if the city council is going to designate money for something anyways, it could easily come out of undesigned cash. I don't think we really need a line item that says, here's $50,000 the city council can use to spend on something. We're just going to use that undesigned cash anyway. So, remove that, and that also reduced this, this number. And again, okay, so when you really crunch the numbers based on what the mayor presented, it's 5.8 percent of a reduction, I'm rounding it to six percent because then the department directors could come back for a supplemental appropriation as needed. The other thing is, and just so everybody's clear, when I say all the departments within the general fund, I do include the mayor's office and the city council because the mayor separated the city council from the mayor and city council's office this year. So that remains that the city council would also take a six percent reduction on our total budget for that, for that thing, and we would have to come back and ask for the supplemental appropriation if we extend or go over our limit as well. So I, I'm referring to everybody with those two exceptions. Number one, the contingency, remove it all, it's 50,000. And, uh, the subsidies and buildings because those are based on MOUs. Again, the interdepartmental charges, I already let the mayor know that as well. And I'm just going to repeat it again. Interdepartmental charges, yes, cities and states and federal government, everybody uses it because it makes sense. If you have an enterprise fund and they're supposed to be operating as a business, they're not paying tax, they're not paying property taxes, so you use a PELT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. There is a formula that you develop for that, the mayor had indicated that. He wants more time to look at the formulas, you know, for the PELTS as well as interdepartmental charges. It was brought to the public's attention four years ago when, um, the mayor at the time was starting down the path of trying to put some sense into the calculations that were being used in the, into these interdepartmental charges. And, uh, the PELTS were drastically reduced, the clarity became apparent because the interdepartmental charges from a general fund to a general fund, which was basically just a paper shuffle, were removed, that gave us transparency. But we still have five million dollars that is being taken from ratepayers and being put into the general fund. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. What I've been objecting to for the last four years, ever since it was brought to the taxpayers and the city council's attention, is that there's really no answer as to where these charges are being allocated to, when they're being out. If you've got a city, and I'm going to use this, I've been using it for three years because A is first in the budget because it just, alphabetically, it shows up there, it's the attorney's office. So the attorney's office has a budget, I'm just using rough figures here, of $750,000, but they interdepartmentally charge the enterprise funds where they actually get back close to $500,000. So their, their department expenses ends up being $250,000. It's like, do they really have an attorney that they need to allocate for the library? If you get rid of the library, can you get rid of a city attorney? I don't think so. City attorneys primarily handle the ordinances and the regulations and they look up and research a lot of stuff. So it pretty much is, and that's why it belongs in a general fund, it's a general fund department. So the interdepartmental charges, in my opinion, really need to be looked at. The mayor's already indicated, he is, plans on devoting this next year and really coming up with some thoughtful considerations of that interdepartmental charges because they are needed. I just questioned whether five million dollars is the true amount, should it be more, should it be less? I, I'm concerned as a taxpayer that we don't even know what the actual cost of doing business is for these interdepartmental charges and these enterprise funds. So I really would like to see that cleaned up. I've been waiting for two years for that to be done and it still hasn't been done. So I am a little disappointed on that one. So with the way the mayor's presented the budget, what I'm asking my peers to consider is it's not good common sense to balance a budget with undesigned cash. This is the year of change, this is the year for developing information and getting information from our department directors. I would recommend that we really look at how much undesigned cash we want to go into upfront, a blank checkbook, you have an additional three hun-, three and a half million dollars to spend. I would rather give them a little bit shorter, let them come ask us for it. If it's a, if it, I don't think this council is unreasonable. If it's a reasonable request, I think the city council will grant greatly and, and fund whatever request comes through if it makes sense, and I think that would give us transparency with our taxpayers. So, I've rambled on a bit, I will yield the floor now, so thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Alderwoman Lisa Modric.
Such a sensitive button. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to take the opposite direction. I've had the opportunity to look over the mayor's presentation, both when he addressed the council a couple of weeks ago, as well as really reviewing it with substantial details, including some of the pieces that we had with what I felt was fantastic questions from the city council. And, um, line item answers that were easy to understand and justify. And that's really what we're doing on our budget, is we're justifying our budget, the revenues that come in and the costs that go out. And gratefully, I'm glad to see that we don't have, uh, tax increases. This is a, a budget that is working from within its, uh, its funding sources. And in some of the, uh, areas that we're talking about with the FTEs, we've had a summary request on every single one of them, and they identify the purpose of the FTE, they state if it is actually going to increase or not increase our budgets, and then where those, um, FTEs are going to work from within the departments. And I think we've held back our departments over the years, 2009, we still kind of feel the sting of, and we're catching up from that. But our, our numbers are rising, our revenues are rising, um, sales tax is rising, and demand is rising on, uh, from within our, our departments. They're doing more. And you see them out there doing more, you can, uh, go and talk to any of the department heads right now, or in my case, I've had an opportunity to go in and have some personal one-on-one, uh, training and, uh, learning about the departments. And it's well worth it because you can really see where they are, what they're working with, and perhaps where they need some attention. And so I'm very confident, I think, that this budget has been worked and worked and worked. I don't know how long the mayor's office has worked on it, uh, it, it certainly hasn't been worked on in a month, and we're talking about trying to work on it in a couple of days. And I think it shows substantial numbers, I think they balance, I think that they're appropriate. We, we've asked the right questions. This is the time, but every year is the time to review your budget, that's what we do. And, um, priority-based, it's coming, but it's not now. Right now, we're balancing and, and giving our, our ordinance towards what we have and what we're working with today, and PBB is still to come, it's, it's still in the wings. So we've got to work up of what we have. To do a six percent all the way across the board on departments, I think that that is radical and a bit unfair. I don't believe that every department needs a six percent, uh, decrease. I think that that could put an awful lot of weight on the departments and then who's going to pick up the change on that one. So, I'm, um, I'm quite satisfied with this budget, I think the questions are good, I don't mind listening to more questions, but, uh, it's a, it's a very well-presented budget and I want to make sure you know where I'm coming from on that.
Thank you, Steve, you've already spoke, so I'm going to go to, uh, Alderwoman Chertie Doyle.
Yeah, because he said he'd come back. No, you don't. Got a mute button.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions for the mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Not all talked out yet. Mayor, first question I would have for you is this approach that you took to developing this budget, um, using undesigned cash to balance it, was it an exception or is it a practice? In other words, is it a bridge to get us, um, from here because we do have so many balls in the air with the new processes that we're implementing? Could you, could you speak to that for?
Please. Yes, um, this, um, in my work on the budget, I went back to 2007 and looked at our historical use of undesigned cash to balance the budget. I can't tell you that I understand what the circumstances were in every budget year, but at our high point, we were using near, uh, four hundred, or 4.5 million dollars to budget. We've used, uh, under 500,000 in the past. We've never, according to this, never had a balanced budget without undesigned cash. And I, uh, exposed this on one of my slides to show that our trend since 2013 is going upward again. And, uh, I, I believe that is a bad trend, some action needs to be taken on this now. And I don't mean this with any disrespect or anything like that, but what I feel like I heard, uh, Alderwoman Scott suggest was cut it, cut it out so that we start off balanced, but then replenish what's needed at the end of the year, uh, to see how things shake out. I think that's one way to do it, but, um, you know, I think, uh, I think we have some tough decisions coming up. I, I believe that our, the trend is bad, we don't want to continue this upward trend. We should try to do something that's going to get us in a downward trend again. But I can't explain to you today why, uh, in 10 years, we've never had a balanced budget without undesigned, undesigned cash.
Well, I think historically too, um, the city has always tried to budget conservatively with respect to projected, um, incoming revenue increases. So if we took a different approach and we projected three percent or four percent, we'd have less undesigned, undesigned cash, excuse me, but we would appear to have a balanced budget. So, um, I tend to agree with Lisa, I think it's the way you look at it, it's, you know, one side or the other. And regardless, either way, it would come through a supplemental appropriation process. I would love to see the, the decreases, that hasn't been reality, um, in my time here, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. Uh, my next question is the impact analysis because we know that six percent across the board is not equal. I mean, how that would impact one department versus another. Now, it may not impact the fire department as much because they just got a million-dollar grant. However, um, how, you know, how would that affect, impact Public Works? We are still recovering from major cuts when this same approach of just straight slashes was used six or seven years ago, maybe eight years ago. And, uh, you know, departments had to look at what they were going to, to cut and it was their equipment, their capital, um, any of their, their capital purchases, and, uh, we still are not up to where we were prior to that. So I would use some caution, and my question would be, do we have enough time in this budget cycle to really truly look at the impact to each and every department with this type of a six percent philosophy? You may not be able to answer that now, I would guess Pauline would probably be shaking her head, but, um, you know, that is something. In order to seriously consider that proposal, I would need to see how it would impact each and every department. I'll yield.
I can respond, I can respond to that if it's appropriate.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I, I see it as, I see there being two, kind of a vague, uh, question on, uh, on the table now, and that is, do we go in and just cut this bottom-line figure and see how it goes and then come back at the end of the year, or do we make a cut that we intend to sustain for the rest of the year? Those are two very different, uh, things. My, my proposal, not, uh, I only know today what I know, and so I'll know more about our priority system by the end of the year, um, but I don't know that today. So if I had to make a judgment today on what to do right now, I would say we're at three and a half million dollars now and we're on an upward trend. Traditionally, what happens is we run the numbers and we fill in the gap with undesigned cash, that's how I view it. We could start, for example, next year committing to a limit of two and a half million dollars or two million dollars and keep that trend over the period of a few years until we get it down, uh, to something near zero. So that's what I would say today. I, I think that my statement that I just made will probably be invalidated by what we learn in the next six months in the budgeting cycle. So, uh, just for my clarification, I'm not talking about make it, uh, let's clarify if we're talking about, well, we don't need to clarify it unless you're going to direct it, but I, I would eventually need to know, are you talking about an, an initial cut and see how it goes and fill in the gaps as the year goes on, or cuts that are meant to be sustained for the year?
Thank you, we'll go to Alderman Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to propose, and I'm not sure if this is the mayor or the city council's call, but the evaluation committee with the, with the number of, uh, organizations that are involved, I'd like to propose we just take the Humane Society out of that. And I think, I thought Alderman Laurenti made a good point, this, that's a public safety issue, I think it's a, it's a different tier of conversation. Should the conversation be had on evaluation? And yes, that's part of the negotiation that we're going to have for the next four months, and I think we need to, to talk about our expectations. But I, I'm not sure, I want to put that in the same ballpark as the golf courses. I, I thought that, that was a good point. And so I, I, I just would propose that we just take that off the list, we're already going to have those discussions with them, it seems kind of, we're having these negotiation discussions while we're, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure that they're going to work hand-in-hand as well as we'd hoped. So that's, uh, something I might ask. Uh, second, the six percent cut across the top, uh, I, I agree, I guess, with what Alderwoman Modric and Doyle said, that I'm not sure it's all created equal. The police take up the largest item in the general fund. What that tells me is that crime is probably the biggest burden on the taxpayer right now. I want to invest in things that reduce crime to reduce the taxpayer burden, to make our community safer and better, cutting them- burden, to make our community safer and better. Cutting them across 6% is, it seems kind of foolish, because that's already the largest item. So, why would we not invest in that? We see methamphetamine use is on the rise, so they need a chemist to deal with the workload. These are public safety things. This is, when we're talking about priorities, I'm going to get back to that term, public safety is priority one for any form of government. That's priority one. That's why we're here. And so, I'm not sure I agree with just to lop the top 6% off and go from there, because I'm not sure it really works that way. Question for the mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, who decides what our priorities are for priority-based budgeting?
We do. First of all, there's, there'll be a series of objective analyses that will take place with our comprehensive plan, our capital improvement plan, and so on. All of the strategic planning processes that we have, we will come to some kind of objective conclusion. Then we will have to submit that to subjective analysis, and we'll get that before this council to see if our, if our money is going where our intention is, if our walk matches our talk. And so, that will be how we will do it. We can, in the end, as long as we know the consequences, we can, for the most part, arbitrarily decide that something needs to be deprioritized so that we can reprioritize something else. So, the answer is all 10 of you set the priorities.
The, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think it's one thing that we need to, as a council right now, and before we have this process in front of us, we have to decide what our priorities. So, what I'm saying is, 6% for parks is, might not be the same 6% for the police department. I think we have to say, what are the most important things that city government does? What's most important? Make sure those are funded, and then go down the list. Now, that's where we get into some disagreement, but we, I think we can agree on some big items, big items, such as public safety. And, of course, you know, priority for me is economic development. If you ask how to increase revenue, it's not necessarily increase taxes. I'd rather increase wages, more spending income, more sales tax coming in, that coming. I'd like to see more visitors in the community, because they make up 17% to 20% of the sales tax revenue. I'd like to see that figure up, because that's less sales tax we have to pay, and we get to invest it into community programs like parks and arts and culture and so on. So, I think those are the questions we have to ask ourselves. What are the priorities? Because just like our house, you know, our own budget, we're not going to say, well, let's cut our budget 6% on everything. That's not the same. You're going to cut cable before you cut your mortgage, for example. So, just, I guess, a few items of note, that not all departments are created equal. I'd like to see the Humane Society removed from this committee, just because of the nature of it. And three, we need to determine what our priorities are. At least agree on some of the big stuff and go from there. And I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been sitting here listening to the debate about, primarily, we'll start off with the 6% and where that number is coming from. Some comments going out like that to the public needs to be done very cautiously. I think my perspective is that that sounds like an emergency issue. And this is not an emergency to address something like this in such a dramatic fashion. I think also that, once we start looking at what that 6% means to not only the departments, the divisions within the city of Rapid City, but we have to take a look at what else that's going to be affecting the CIP budget. Are we going to also do that 6% with the streets, infrastructure, et cetera? That's going to be affected by that. So, just using that as an example of the rationale for doing, just picking a number out and coming up with simply no strategy behind why we need an X number of percent removed from our budget, doesn't work for me, especially when we're in the process of working towards priority-based budgeting. And my estimate is that priority-based budgeting process is approximately, I'm using the number about three months behind where we are current, with the current budget. There's a lot of things that have to be done before we can actually get into the process of the priority-based budgeting. And in my opinion, I don't think we're going to make it by October 1st, which we need to have this resolution adopted and ordinance, excuse me, not resolution, ordinance adopted by October 1st. So, all of these factors are very good, interesting conversation pieces, but getting this done before October 1st, roughly 30 working days to get this completed, I just don't think we have enough time to get through that debate on that. And also, I'd like to suggest that it isn't, the other departments that have been recommended for consideration for the largest departments, since I came out of Public Works, I'm going to advocate for Public Works. Can you imagine what a 6% cut would be doing to the Public Works Division, or, excuse me, the Public Works Department within the city of Rapid City? We're not in an emergency issue, folks. If we were, then I would be looking at something other than just a hatchet job to our city budget. And I don't think that's very appropriate, since we know more about how priority-based budgeting works than to address some of the different things that priority-based budgeting will allow us to do. The next question I have to ask is that, if the departments are going to come in and ask for supplemental, where would that funding come from? In my mind, where does supplemental come from? Since it's not a budgeted item, where does that come from? My speculation would be, it would be coming out of undesignated cash to reinvest back into our departments that need that support. So, right now, I'm very much on board with the mayor's budget on this. I'm very comfortable with the direction that he's taking on this. If we are able to take a little bit more time to look at the undesignated cash portion of this, and actually start putting together a plan rather than doing it all at once, just kind of arbitrarily, I'd be more comfortable with that. Right now, I cannot support just something that's totally arbitrary. Let me finish up with one additional comment, and that is to do with the Humane Society. I thank you, folks, for coming in and being participants within the listening of this conversation. However, I would advise the, all the groups, the seven different agencies that are on that evaluation, not to be that concerned about it. It's always good to have somebody else take a look at what you're doing. That includes all the other agencies, including the golf course. They should not be fearful of this process. If you are, then something's wrong. Then that evaluation will bring that out. What I'm hoping you will do, and I'm talking to all seven agencies that are under this scrutiny for this evaluation, and I hope this doesn't end this year, I hope we scrutinize some other divisions, other departments, other investments that we're doing within the city, that this is an opportunity for you to present, and again, I'm speaking to all seven agencies on this evaluation, to take this opportunity to explain to the council members, those three business people, the three council members, and those other three members of the community that do not fully understand what your agency does. I look at this as an opportunity. I represent the Journey Museum. We are looking at this as an opportunity to get our information out to the public and put us in a good light after all of this. So, I feel very confident about the evaluation process, so I would hope that the Humane Society remains with us on the, going through this evaluation. And again, from my perspective, don't be fearful of it. Use it as an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Just point of clarification, Mr. Estes, are we doing a first reading? Are we just discussing? What are we doing here? I mean, you know, we're just...
Well, here's...
Yeah.
I'll answer that. Right now, we're having council discussion. You can ask the mayor questions. Then, and then, well, once we quit having questions, we'll probably have a, somebody might want to make a motion that they approve this as a first reading.
Okay.
And then it has to have seven votes, or somebody might want to say that they want, or the other answer would be to set another date to give more written questions to the mayor and have another public meeting like this. So, what we're doing, Alderwoman Drew, is having a democratic meeting, and this council's going to vote, and we're going to decide what we're going to do.
Well, I just have a few comments, and then I guess I might make a motion. You know, a budget is our best guess. If that's all it is, you know, it's not, you know, holding our feet to the fire. We won't, you know... Do you want me to make a motion first? Okay, fine. I will make a motion. Nope.
Kind of already spoke, so...
Okay. So, can I continue speaking? All right.
Yeah. I don't make the rules. I just...
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. Okay. But I'm just saying, it's our best guess. You know, this is what we do here. We're trying to figure out what to do with the budget. I find the number of FTEs troubling, too. You know, I just, I really think that there's a lot that they're asking for here, so we might need some more information from the departments on why they're making these requests. I just looked quickly through the scoring process, and really didn't enlighten me that much, you know? So, I don't know whether this made it easier for them to ask for more employees, or what happened here, but it seems like we're getting a lot of requests for full-time employees. And as I've watched us with our budget and our expenditures over the last couple of years, the importance changes. You know, we have change orders. We decided to do softball lights in the middle of the year. It was $500,000. You know, it just seems like some things are very arbitrary. And so, we have to have some flexibility in our budget. And so, right now, we're just saying, I think this is a good path to take or not. So, I think that's where we're kind of at. As far as what Alderman Solomon said about our priorities, prevention of crime, or tourism growth, things like that, in my estimation, I don't want more police. I want more arts and culture, because that grows the basis of why people come here. That makes people maybe not take to crime, because they're actually doing something more productive with their time. So, that's a totally different way of looking at it, and when we're looking at priority-based budgeting, mine is totally different than, you know, what you would see as, you know, the police budget being the most important thing, because I'm looking at prevention from a different point of view. So, I guess I can't make a motion, but what I'm saying here is, you know, this is our best guess, and I think I could support this budget.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And it's been a topic of discussion, but I just want to real quickly say, for all my colleagues to consider, about Amanda Alderwoman Scott's proposal, which is pulling back the undesignated cash from all of the departments, and them needing to come to us. If they're no-brainer expenditures, and I agree with you, Jason Alderman Solomon, on that particular issue, some of this stuff is no-brainer. 6% across the board, maybe some of them need to be 12, and the police department needs to be two, or, you know, whatever that figure is. But the bottom line is, if they're no-brainer expenditures, and they're coming back to the council, those are quick approvals by all of us. Those are going to be easy. Those are going to be simple majorities. Those are going to be done quickly. What it does do is hold us, our feet to the fire, not the departments. It holds the council feet to the fire, because we are ultimately responsible for the taxpayers' money. So, for those ones where we want more information, where we need more information, say Public Works comes to us, just as an example, not specifically Public Works, but, not that they have, but I'm just saying, maybe we want more information. But if the police department comes to us and says, we need A, B, and C, boom, it's a done deal, if it makes sense. So, I don't think we should be afraid of that. I think we should embrace it, because it puts the onus on the elected officials, who are elected by all of the taxpayers, to make sure that their money is spent properly. And I think it will be very easy. I don't think it will be very hard at all. I don't think we should fear that public safety will suffer, because not a one of us will vote against that. So, on that note, I'll move on. The other topic that I wanted to talk about in the Humane Society is here, so I want to, I have a question for the Humane Society, whoever it is that will be able to answer the question.
We can't, Steve, we don't have presentations, and this is...
I have a question about the, for the Humane Society. This is a question.
You can ask the mayor.
I have a question for the Humane Society about their budget.
You can ask the ma, we don't, we've not, that's been this whole process. We've not, we've not invited anybody else.
I understand that, but I have a question about the Humane Society's budget and what their budget is here tonight. And so, I want to help the council understand that they're being earmarked for $278,318, and I want to, which you all have been sent, was their presentation of their actual cost for those services, because this isn't a subsidy. This is actually a professional contract for services for public safety. So, I don't understand where, we've always had people answer questions. Some people have come to budget hearings, and we've never asked them any questions, but they were here if we had questions, and that's what I want to do, is take advantage of that.
But we've not, we've not publicized or scheduled.
Then I would like to have a, are you saying that I need to make a motion to have somebody come up and answer one of my questions?
You would, you would have to, what you would have to do is make a motion that at a future meeting, that they get, give a presentation, and if...
I'm not asking for a presentation. This is my question, and they're the best ones to answer that question.
The process, and its process...
I haven't seen anything in this process that was communicated to me or any council member that said we couldn't ask a question of an individual from the public.
The process as established at the last...
I disagree.
Well, that's fine.
Show me where it is. I don't, I have not been sent that, that we couldn't ask a question of an individual out here who has a budget that provides services, and we've all talked about it tonight, and I have a question, because they can answer it. Nobody here can answer that question but them. So, you're saying I can't ask a question about a budget item?
I'm saying that has been...
I'm not asking for a presentation.
Well, that has not been the way this budget hearings have proceeded.
It's exactly how our budget hearings have proceeded.
In the past, this is, the mayor established when he gave the budget, that this was his budget, and if he had questions, that he would answer. So...
The mayor cannot answer questions for the Humane Society.
Well, this is the mayor's budget.
No, no, the budget is ours now. He's already handed it off to us. He clearly stated that himself. So, I have a question, again, I'm going to ask one more time. I have a question about a budget item for 2017, and I would like somebody who can answer the question to do that.
Well, as it stands right now, I, as I understand, the way these budget hearings are set up, Mr. Laurenti, is that we're not taking...
I'm not understanding what you mean by set up. Were there ground rules sent to us?
The ground rules were set up at the last...
I have not received any ground rules.
The ground rules were set up at the last budget hearing, that we send the questions in writing, Alderman Laurenti...
That was to the mayor. That was to the mayor.
To the mayor, and he will answer those questions.
Correct, and he tried to answer the questions.
And if you had a question regarding the animal control or the Humane Society, you should have been asked of him, and he would have got you the answer. He would...
He already tried to answer the Humane Society question that I asked, which was insufficient. So, the people best answer that question...
Alderman Laurenti, I have a question for you. Was that question submitted to him in writing during the past two weeks?
The question about the Humane Society was brought up, yes, because I sat in the contract negotiations with the mayor's representatives, which he brought up tonight.
In the last two weeks, since the last budget hearing, when we established the ground rules for how we come to this meeting.
There were no ground rules written or sent to council. So, you keep referencing ground rules, but there were no ground rules sent to council saying, we couldn't ask questions of individuals who can enlighten the council on a budget item. I don't understand why this is an issue.
Mr. Chairman, a parliamentary question, if I may. Parliamentary question. Would it be appropriate for Mr. Laurenti to ask... Would it be appropriate for Mr. Laurenti to ask for a motion to have the Humane Society on the next agenda?
That's what I, that's what I'd stated, is I guess if...
Ridiculous.
Because I could support that motion. If he would make that motion to have the Humane Society on the next agenda, I could support that motion.
Because I don't, I don't see that as being fair to all the other organizations that were not, in the past, there were department head directors and all the public, you know, the other entities that gave presentations, and then they could all have asked questions. That was, that procedure of budget hearings was not followed this year.
Let me tell you where it's fair. This was a published meeting, publicly published, met the requirements by the state. The Humane Society is here tonight. Every other group that is getting money or is contracting services with the city could be here tonight, and we could ask those questions of anybody in the, that has a, any, getting any money from the city. So there's been equal opportunity for everybody from the public to come tonight and either get a question from us if we saw them out there. I see them out there, and I have a question for them.
I see them out there also, Mr. Laurenti, and I appreciate the fact, but, but... I guess...
May I?
Sure.
Okay. You guys are never going to see the same side of the coin here. They're here. Let them ask the question instead of us having another meeting that our survey monk already tells us nobody has the time for. Please.
I guess I'd like to put it to the vote of the council then, if that's fine. Is that all right with you, Alderman Laurenti?
Yes.
Okay. Modric? Laurenti?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Charity? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Ask your question. Well, you go, you go...
Please, thank you, if you can. Mr. Sasso, my question to you is this, because it's been a topic of discussion with a lot of us this evening. Your proposal, which was presented in March, showed an actual cost to provide the professional services of animal control as being $518,147. My question to you, because the budget for 2017 is $278,318, how is there such a great gap between the Humane Society's cost to provide those services and what is being earmarked, at least for the 2017 budget? Can you just enlighten me a little bit?
And I will try to be very, very brief.
Thank you.
Yes, basically, we're still on 2012 funding as far as the year 2012, so that's the first thing. You know, our expenses have continued to rise. Minimum wage has gone up. Building expenses have gone up significantly. So, between the animal services and enforcement, the facility, and there again, when it comes to the animal housing, the city has only paid for a short period of time. It doesn't pay for an extended period of time. It's only the three days. And that's, those figures, we've broken down based on the percentage that the city provides, our overall budget, and because the city is 63% of the service calls. And so, that is a breakdown of what our budget should be as far as with that. And just to head off any, any other questions, yes, we have been fundraising. So far in the last six months, we've raised $139,000, which I think is pretty good. And we are exploring also Vision Fund for some of the, some of the big expenses that we have as well.
Mr. Sasso, I hate to interrupt, but for me, I'm not concerned about what the Humane Society is doing fundraising-wise, because the reality of what we're talking about is a professional service, a contract that provides animal control for the city. What you do outside of that is the Humane Society's business. Because what's important to me is that people who get calls, and oftentimes, we're talking over 5,000 calls, I think, on the average, are oftentimes public safety issues. Getting between, animal control officers who are making, I believe, just over $9 an hour, get between some animals that are determined to hurt somebody and that individual. So, I honestly don't even want to hear about that part of it with the Humane Society, because what we're really, in my opinion, what I'm very passionate about here is the fact that the gap between your actual cost of services, and I know it's an old building that was donated to the Humane Society back in 94 or 99, I can't remember, 94, I think, and then there was an add-on in 99, is the gap. And we are proposing, in the mayor's budget, to give you exactly what you were receiving in 2013. The negotiations that the mayor has brought up, which I sat in on, are not about how much the value of this public safety issue is. It's more about some of the things that are procedural, because I sat in there. This was, none of the talk was about the cost. So what I'm hoping tonight is that there will be a motion, and I will second or I will come back in and make the motion myself, is that we begin to try to close the gap. And I agree with Alderman Solomon on, we need to get these people off the evaluation list, for one thing. But even a 20% increase would bring you to $333,000 from 278, but still leaves an unbelievable gap between your costs, which I know a lot of its facility, and what you're actually receiving. So I'm hoping there's going to be a motion to increase your budget by a minimum of 20%, because we can easily force the golf courses to choose, or the Public Works Group to choose from that $80,000 without spending a dime. More in the budget. We could have the golf courses decide from which three cost centers that they're going to, we'll shift that $55,600 to animal control services, and that let the Public Works Group choose where they're going to lose that money from the golf courses. I think that is more than reasonable, and I'm hoping that there'll be a motion tonight, and we can fix this. This is unbelievably ridiculous that I've had to fight to get an answer from you, and I'm hoping there'll be a motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think some of us are just getting warmed up up here at 8:30 in the evening. Question for the finance officer, if I may. Yes? Thank you. Typical number of days of turnaround for a supplemental appropriation from the time that it's being compiled and your process that you go through with the departments versus first, second reading, and then 20 days publishing, yes?
So, it's probably about a minimum of 45 days just to collect the data from the first, the first round to have, and have first reading. So 45 days there. You tack on a minimum, we have to do a minimum of seven days between readings, but we next, usually go to the next council meeting, so there's 14 days, and then 20 days after it's published, which it could be published the Saturday after the meeting, but typically, it's published two Saturdays after the meeting. So now you're looking at another 11 days, plus the 20 days after that before it's effective.
Thank you. I guess my take is I'd rather equip departments now, because our practice, and maybe you could speak to this a little bit, we usually, I mean, we do budget conservatively. In my, my time here, which is, I'm in my sixth year, I haven't seen a year where we have not had excess revenue come in over and above projections. So we've always had some kind of undesignated cash to, to work with in most cases. What is, can you talk a little bit about that process? We, a lot more comes in over the year than we have at the end of the year projected. Some of that is sometimes used to balance the budget, but that process, that the rest of it is reallocated through the supplemental appropriation process. Could you speak to that briefly, please?
If I'm understanding correctly, so if, I'll use the fire department as an example, being we talked about the SAFE for Grant earlier. If we don't include that in the budget now, and we do a supplement for it later, we would show the offset being the revenue from the grant, just like we would in a normal budget allocation appropriation. Is that what you're asking?
More so just with regard to undesignated cash and how we utilize that to get that working for the taxpayers rather than sitting in an account somewhere.
So usually, unless there is a grant funding or if a donation came in, that type of thing. Sometimes there is revenue to offset some of the supplemental appropriations that we do during the year. Mostly, those are enterprise funds, though, because it's all based on goods sold, services sold. But with the general fund, it is typically the undesignated cash. We also typically, if we pulled up the history of the budget turnback, we've, in the nine years I've been here, there's only been one or two years that we've actually used cash on hand, and that's when the economy took a turn for the worst. And other than that, we've always increased the cash balance at the end of the year.
Okay. The point I'm trying to make is that we're utilizing that undesignated cash one way or the other. So why don't we equip our departments now? If for some reason something took a dive, we would make cuts on the fly. We're not going to stick to that budget and go in the red, correct? I mean, we would make adjustments.
Correct. Like we've done in the past, we would hold off on purchases. We would hold off on hiring non-essential-ish type. I mean, I don't know if anything's considered non-essential if you look at the departments, but we would hold off on what is considered non-essential services and non-essential purchases.
Okay. And I just, you know, for the sake of those who did show up today, Jackie, hi. You know, we're talking about potentially increasing your request by 20% and then a slash by 6%, and so, you know, you might land somewhere over 14. I, I just think we're using, it's kind of, it's kind of a backwards approach. I totally get what Amanda's saying, though, because then each one coming through has, it's a little more transparent. But is it reasonable when we're looking at 64 days? You know, if a department is really in need and we've cut them by 6%, is that reasonable? And that's, that's if it goes through the process without discussion and without a lot of debate and a lot of scrutiny. So, I think I've heard enough this evening. I think it's time to equip. One thing to keep in mind, too, is Pauline referenced when the economy took a dive, there were hiring freezes. And then in my first four years on this council, FTE was a bad word. It wasn't a four-letter word, but it was close. And so, departments were terrified to ask for what they needed. And, and now, you know, the things are coming in, things are looking good, there's changes, the city is growing despite the fact that there were shortages in some of these departments. And it, just like some of the capital things I alluded to earlier, there's some still catching up to do. The city is still very much in a healing process. And so, you know, if we can use that, and we're going to use that undesignated cash anyway. It's just a matter of, are we going to do it and, and like pulling teeth for departments and organizations to get what they need throughout the year? Or are we going to just do it now? Thank you. I yield.
Alderman Jason Solomon.
Going to make a motion and then ask to yield a floor, make a motion to pass the first reading of the proposed budget, if I can get a second. Yield the floor, okay. Or retain the floor, excuse me. The reason I'm going to go ahead and do that is, I, I actually, I agree with, I appreciate where Alderwoman Scott is coming from as well. I think, I think she brings up some excellent points that we certainly need to be wary of. I don't like the idea of having a dog and pony show at the end of the year for everybody who wants something. I believe it's inefficient to run a city government. I can't imagine running a business where we're like, "Well, we're going to not fund you everything you need, and everything you need after this amount, you're going to just come back to us. We'll take care of you then." A year from now, when we may not even be the same people on the council, and things change every single year, priorities change. We don't know what next year is going to bring. If you do, I'd like to get to know you a little bit more, tell me some things, but none of us know what a year is going to bring. And I'm just not comfortable doing that to these professionals who work in our city government. These are trained professionals. I think it's time that we send a message that we empower our city employees to do the best job that they can. It's up to us to make sure that they, that we don't do it in such a way that we're increasing taxes and increasing the taxpayer burden. And I think we have every right to ask good questions, but I don't think that we should handcuff them throughout the remainder of the year, you know, by 6% or whatever, whatever the case may be. I think we go ahead and do this because I think it's most efficient. We got to serve our citizens. These are services that our citizens need. Police, fire, Public Works, go on and on and on. These are valuable services, and I, I don't think that we need to send this message to city. I don't think you're going to get the best out of folks. And so, and the turnaround time, 45 days, once you get a first and second reading, and then 20 days after publishing, to even get something done, once we did approve any extra expenditures down the line, I don't think that's, that's the way to run things, so I don't, I don't... What's that? You can do a friendly amendment. So anyways, that, that's, I'll yield a floor on that, but that, that's my rationale behind it. I think she makes some great points, but I think holding up the process like this is inefficient. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to pass first reading of this ordinance as it, as presented by the mayor. I have people in the queue, so I'm going to go to you, but your discussion now will be towards, towards this ordinance. I'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
I'm sure you'll rein me in, Mr. Chair, when, when I get off, off base here, so... I'm going to be supporting the motion. However, I don't think we have the six or seven votes that are needed to get this passed here tonight, so... But I think it's a valiant effort to get this process started in this direction. Again, going back to the supplemental process, if I can ask a couple more questions on that side of it. And this will probably be more directed towards you, Mr. Chair, as far as what I understand of the supplemental process after Pauline explained it to me. So, the next step will be, in the, in a supplemental process, that'll be coming before the council. If that comes in front of the council, is there an avenue that, that... I'm using careful words here, because once the press gets a hold of this, or the news media gets a hold of this, my largest concern is that when we start doing, shall I say, reallocating the budgets for these different departments, isn't this going to be exposing us to another opportunity for the, for the people that are coming up with a negative or wanting to have no additional supplements for it, and then the press picking them on this, or the news media picking them on this, and saying, "We're raising the taxes just so that we can fund a special division or a special department?"
Yeah, I'm not sure. You know, I think, I think is what I got, Alderman Nordstrom, is that, is that you're, you're in favor of passing this first reading of this ordinance.
Yep.
And I think you're, if I can, I don't know if it's called editorializing or whatever, but I think you're verbalizing that you feel that if, if we don't pass this and we do the 6%, that we're sending a, sending out a bad message. And I guess, I guess each one of us are going to look at what kind of, I, I don't, I just think that, you know, I... What I, I think the mayor in, in some sorts kind of put that out there, that, you know, that we're doing priorities-based budgeting, and we're not quite there. And I, I think some, I think in a little bit of his presentation, he kind of put it out there that there might be some room. You know, the, I guess we'll have to see what the votes are, but the, the cut doesn't mean that we're going to go cut necessarily, but I'm, I'm not convinced that, that it'll work the way Alderwoman Scott and Alderman Laurenti maybe think, because, because if we, if we sit here from the dice and say, "Well, let's cut this 6%, so we don't have any undesignated cash, but if they need it later, we'll supplement it with the undesignated cash," it's kind of like, it's kind of like takes the incentive, in my mind, away from them searching for the cuts because we've left the door open. So, I'm not, I didn't answer your question, but, but anyway. answer your question, but, but anyway.
If I may follow up.
Sure.
My, my largest concern on this is that if, if this concept is followed through on and we're not very clear on what this means to all the departments and, and, and including the additional expenses that we have within the city or revenues within the city. If we're not very clear on what that's gonna be presented to all of the revenue streams, all of the expensive streams, I, I think it opens the door for, an opportunity for, for some people within this, within this city to start making the argument, we're making special favors for different departments and, and special favors for different agencies that we represent. And that's my concern, is that once we start doing a supplemental process on it, we're, we're, we're gonna be in the, in the light of showing favoritism.
Sure. So I, I understand what you're saying, and I think the point by, by the two colleagues I have on my right is well taken, is that, is that undesignated cash is one-time money, and budgeting around one-time money is horrible business planning.
Totally agree.
What a, what a, but what I see tonight, Alderman Nordstrom, is that if, it takes seven votes. So if the, if this, if this motion for the first reading fails, then what I would hope we would do, I, I have no idea, but I'm gonna pretty much guess that if one of these two make a motion, that we pass this budget with 6% off, it's gonna fail too. What I would hope that if the first reading fails, is that we would come together, pick another date, try to set the ground rules for the process, that we have more questions in writing for the mayor to answer, and try to get to a point where we have our questions sufficien, sufficiently answered. And, and that if, if they're serious about the 6%, that they, they find, I mean, to me, if you're gonna cut that kind of money, you just gotta go, probably go find it, purposely find it and not do across the board. So again, I probably didn't answer your question, but that's what I see. Either, either we're gonna pass the first reading and, or we're gonna leave here, I would, in my hopes of setting a date for another hearing, and, and that's it.
Again, I would also caution you as far as the, the chair establishing who can make presentations at the next meeting, because what, what has established right now with tonight's meeting, we could start asking some of these other agencies that are in the audience these questions. And I want to respect your opinion as far as not carrying on this conversation with other agencies. So...
Well, I, I will answer that.
Yes, please.
The, the mayor's the CEO of, of, of the city, and he went to his department heads and worked out the budgets with them, and, and, and he's relayed that, you know, he's gonna, this is his budget, and he's gonna fall on the sword in this budget. And, and that he did not want us, that, that this type of budget process that, that he's doing is, is he did not want us asking questions that would, you know, he's asked the questions, he's prepared the budget, and, and it's, and it's his budget. Yeah, it does, we have to prove it, but, whatever, you know, I, I get it. It was just, it's just that this year's budget process wasn't set up for presentations, you know, and I, I don't think, you know, and I realize they were sitting there and we got to ask the question, but, you know, you opened up a whole can of, if you guys wanna start, if, if you guys wanna start all over and bring everybody in to give presentations, then make the motion and let's do her. But I'll tell you what, you guys, the council's gonna have to make themselves way more available than they, than they are. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, with, with those comments, I, I agree with you, and I'm really concerned about the precedent we've established here tonight, because the, I just started thinking of all the questions that I could ask the Humane Society. But I'm going to respect your wishes on, on this, at this juncture so that we can actually proceed forward. So again, I concur with what you're saying, and you articulated the answers that I was looking for very well. So thank you for your efforts and, and leading this council on. So, and good luck in the future.
Well, that's why I get three times the pay as you guys, Alderman Laurenti.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to include the 20% increase for the Humane Society and that it be taken from the subsidies going to the golf courses and allowing Public Works to decide which ones that comes from so that they can prioritize the difference between the $80,178 they're receiving and the $55,600 that we would be moving to Humane Society, if I can get a second. The motion is to amend the budget to include a 20% increase to the Humane Society, using those funds that are currently projected to subsidize the golf course at $80,178. It would still leave them the difference between $55,600 and $80,178. And if I can get a second, I, I can give more information, some history on the golf courses as well.
I don't see a second, Alderman Laurenti. You still have a floor, but I don't see a second on your motion.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, and I will bring this again. Hopefully, if, if there are people on the council tonight that have questions, I would be glad to, to answer that. Part of the history with the golf courses is I, I actually was personally involved with getting the restaurant out of the city's realm, then when they were running it, because we were subsidizing the restaurant at a very large number. So one of the things that we talked about was the fact that they needed to increase their fees so that they could pay for the golf courses. And they have refused to do that every year. They have proposed it, I believe, to the Golf Course Committee Group and have allowed them to make that decision when the council, not just myself, but many on the council have expressed, and some of them are not here tonight, but have expressed dissatisfaction with the fact that we're using general fund dollars for the golf courses, because they need to be paying for themselves, and they haven't. And those increases in their fees have not happened for the last three years, and we have asked every year that they do so. But again, we're subsidizing them at a rate of over $80,000 for FY17, which is why I was wanting to earmark that increase for the Humane Society, a public safety issue, and shift those funds to them because they're still greatly underfunded. Even if you believe their $518,000 figure is off by 30%, that they've inflated it, there's, that would still put their projected, their actual cost at over $362,000. And they would still be at only 333. They would still be underfunded if you believed that they inflated their figures by 30%. That's how underfunded they are right now. So I'll bring it back again. I'm hoping that if you have questions, anybody on the council, that I can help because I am the liaison with them and I can provide real data on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Modric.
Call the question.
Call the question. Any objections? Have an objection.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Chair, I do have an objection.
Yeah, take a vote to...
Okay. Well, well, and that, just a majority wins? Okay. Well, I guess we'll have a roll call on calling the question.
Mr. Chair, there's a reason why I'm calling for an objection, and, and do you need an explanation or is it permitted to do an explanation of why, why I'm bringing up the objection?
Sure.
We forgot the airport. The budget in, for the airport needs to be an increase, and we forgot that number to be added into the, this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make the motion when it's appropriate time.
Should you rescind your call the question? Call... Okay. We'll do the, we've still gotta vote on calling the question. Heidi?
Doyle.
She didn't wanna. We're voting on calling the question. Well, let's, let's just go ahead and vote. I mean... So, so we have a no from Doyle.
Estes.
No.
Scott. Laurenti. Modric. Nordstrom. Drew. Solomon. Vote failed.
So we have a... Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I'll yield the floor.
I figured you would.
Because I'm going to be voting no on this anyways.
That's what I thought. Okay. Alderwoman Richie Nordstrom.
I'll make my motion, Mr. Chair, is an increase to the airport budget for $124,789. And if I can get a second on that, we'll...
Yes. Motion is second to increase the airport budget by $124,089.
$789.
$789, okay.
Yes. Thank you. And if I can have, it's just a reminder that we forgot to do this as part of the procedure because of the finance officer's comments earlier, and so we've over, that's just strictly an oversight, folks, and so not a big deal. But anyway, I'd like to turn it over to Finance Officer Pauline Sumpson for clarity.
Pauline, if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is for the 1.5 FTEs that the ARF or code in the Airport Enterprise Fund will be paying for.
Thank you. I see nobody in the queue, so, so well, if, if there's no further discussion, we vote first on this amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. So now we have on the floor yet, and there's nobody in the queue, we have a motion to pass the first reading with the airport budget as amended. Heidi, roll call, please.
Scott. Laurenti. Modric. Nordstrom. Drew. Solomon. Doyle. Estes.
Aye.
Six to two.
And just as a clarif, as a... We need that on the record that we thought that took seven votes, but according to our, our finance officer, it, six votes passes this budget.
Would you like me to read that state statute?
Please.
So SDCL 9810 says, "Recording of votes by council members, numbers of votes required for action. The yays and nays shall be taken upon the passage of all ordinances and upon any proposal to create a liability against the first or second-class municipality or for the expenditure or appropriation of its money. And in all other cases, at the request of the member, which shall be entered on the Journal of its proceedings. The concurrence of a majority of all the aldermen shall be necessary to the passage of any such ordinance or proposal. It shall require a two-thirds vote of all the aldermen to sell any city property. Because we are a 10-person council, it would require six votes for a majority."
No. Did you have something, Steve? All right. So first reading, is, is it the wishes of this council to have another hearing or to try to pass a second reading at the council meeting? Alderman Laurenti.
I'll make the motion to schedule another budget hearing for August 31st at 5:30, if I can get a second.
We've got no second. There are a lot of people looking at their phones.
Mr. Chair, if you look at what was provided to you...
Yep.
Only six of the council members indicated that they would be available that day.
All right. August 31st is, is a date that, that was shown that we'd have a quorum available. Only six. Does not show that Alderman Roberts responded. So, so we have, we, we still have a motion on the floor with no second for August 31st hearing.
September, just to interject here, we can, I'll amend the motion if, if there's a better date. I think we had September 7th as having seven here, and then I think September 13th is having seven as well. Maybe we'll get more as we get closer to that date. So if it, if it's okay procedurally, September 7th would be the motion for the next hearing.
Got a motion on the floor for having a hearing on September 13th?
The 7th.
7th?
The 7th.
9, 7, okay.
I thought we had...
Well, there might be, if, if Alderman Roberts can be here, there might be an extra one. But anyway, I don't have, we don't have a second for that either. You are. You're in here. It's a long time. So we, we've got another motion with no second. I guess it can be put on the, the agenda of the next council meeting. Let's just put it on the agenda of the next council meeting and handle it then. It'll just go on. It'll just go on the agenda for the next council meeting and pack a lunch. Chair would entertain a mo, motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.